Okay, Dr. Sane, we're back online.
All right, thank you. I think that Lynn and Allison should be extremely proud that they have this much support in their schools. There are many schools in the state that would be grateful to have such support and I think that is just a blessing that we have in Cabarrus County. I want to talk about a couple of things that were mentioned tonight and then I'll answer any questions that you might have. I want to remind us that waiting is not an option. I'm very concerned. I realize that pulled permits do not equal two homes in six months. I understand that. But I do believe that our economy is slowly improving and I think we have enough evidence in these 12 subdivisions to let us know that we need to seriously think about what we're doing here. And talk a little bit about capping and why that's not a very good option. Capping, I'm not sure makes anybody happy in the long run except for those who get to remain at the home school, to be honest with you. It's a very expensive thing. We have done capping in the past. We have capped school, I believe it was Concord Middle School. The transportation was expensive and a nightmare, to say the least. Concord Middle School was pretty happy because their enrollment did not increase anymore, but beyond that, I'm not sure anybody was really happy with it. Parent choice was brought up as an option that I had not reviewed as part of the board documents. I'd like to mention that while parent option is a really good idea and we've tried to offer more options for parents in this county by opening up magnet schools, I can't depend on enough parents to say, "You know what? I want to leave Odell and go to Boger," or enough parents to say, "You know what? I want to leave Cox Mill and go to Farr." I think if you would ask 99.9% of the parents at Odell and Cox Mill, they would say, "I want to stay right where I am. I'm very happy. I love my school. I love my principal and I love my community." We looked at the vertical option that was given today and have two concerns about that. One, it does increase the number of students that we would be redistricting to Boger. And I have learned in the past week or so that Kellswater has now begun to pull permits and I'm concerned about sending too many children over to Boger Elementary School. I am concerned about, I want to say one thing, for the next probably five years until we can get some schools built in this area, all of the schools are going to be overcrowded. But at Boger, we do have the capacity to increase our number of students who can be handled, who can be comfortably educated there by adding mobile units. We cannot do that at Odell and we cannot do that in Cox Mill. I want to speak just as a Title I school as far as Farr is concerned. I don't know exactly how much longer Farr will remain a Title I school. It came in because it barely has enough free and reduced lunch students to meet the threshold of Title I. I think what you'll find if you were to give Farr an opportunity or to go and visit in any of those classrooms, you would find the same quality education that you would find at Odell and at Cox Mill. What you would have is just fewer free and reduced lunch children at Cox Mill and Odell. And again, regardless of what we do, I want to say, I think Cox Mill and Odell are going to continue to be overcapacity, but we'll be able to manage that. Right now, if we do nothing, we will not be able to manage what's happening. We will not be able to add mobile units and we will not be able to, we will have, we're not allowed to have classes over 24 in kindergarten through fourth grade. That's not an option. That's from the state. So I put forth my recommendations that I made to you last week and I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Sane. All right, board members, this is our chance to ask questions of Dr. Sane and then we'll continue to move right on forward with whichever way the board sees fit. So I'd like to start on Mr. Farr's side and, Mr. Farr, if you have comments, recommendations, questions, concerns, now's the time to address those to Dr. Sane.
I have a few questions, but, you know, first of all, I would like to thank the parents for coming out tonight. I sat in your seat about six years ago doing the same thing you're doing and you're supposed to fight for your kids and what you think's right for them. So, trust me, I've been on the other side and actually, times were better a few years ago. I actually moved twice so my kids could be in the school district I want them to be in. I don't urge y'all to do that because it's probably not worth it. But, you know, we take this very seriously. I think every, I've been on the board four years now and we've done redistricting for elementary, middle, high school, so it's tough. I think we should let the new four, the four new board members do this in December instead of us do it before we get off the board, but, you know, we're not going to run away from it. With that said, only thing that really bothers me is the fact that Ms. Sane, and you've done an outstanding job.
Oh, thank you.
I think as far as the first presentation of a redistricting, this has maybe been the best that I've seen since I've been here. But with that said, the thing that bothers me is the fact that, and you just stated it, it's probably going to be five years before we get a new school and these kids are going to have to be moved probably more than one time. And I know none of us like that. So I don't know, you know, when I came here tonight, as usual, I was kind of okay with the plan.
Yeah.
But, you know, I've got a heart.
Yes, sir.
Which all of us do and you do too. And I'm going to tell you folks something, this probably bothers her more than it bothers any of us. So, you know, we always want to do the right thing and we're going to do what we think is the best possible scenario to help this matter, but that was the only thing is, you know, I almost would like to think that, okay, we need to have a land, the land before we make a move to keep us from having to move multiple times. I don't know if that's possible to do, but that's just a question that I have. Maybe that would keep some of these people from moving a couple of times.
We have with the committee, and I have Lynn Whitkey here also, we met again. We've identified two possible parcels of land. I don't know how much I can say here, but that's it, okay? But that's not the all, okay? So just know that we're working forward to that. My fear is that even if we did identify a parcel of land, that we still would have to do something immediately for schools that are at such capacity. It takes three years to build a school and I don't think Odell and Boger can wait three years for us to make some adjustments.
Mr. Farr, are you good with your questions?
Yeah, one other thing, to the Odell folks, I think me and Mr. Schu here are only two board members that have been lifelong residents of Cabarrus County and so I know how dear Odell is to you people and I hope we can make something that satisfies you guys. Because that's a, you know, I'm kind of, like I said, I've been here a while and those old schools like that, Odell and those places, Northwest Cabarrus, Central, Mount Pleasant, all those places are dear to me, so just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Ms. Fertinbaugh, you have your comments ready.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Schu. Dr. Sane, first of all, thank you and as others have said, if anyone does not know Dr. Sane, she came up through the elementary principalship ranks and so her heart is absolutely with the elementary kids and we see that all the time. Like Mr. Farr, I just want to comment that my area has been redistricted and been the left behind neighborhood when the kids got to go to the new schools. So my kids lived through middle and high personally and then after I thought I was done with it, Mr. Klutz had the nerve, and I say that with all due respect, Robert, to bring my neighborhood being redistricted to Boger. We were the last street to move and we were at Weincoff. We were old school Weincoff, just like folks here at Odell. And so that was heartbreaking and my neighborhood went through the rolling emotions. "We don't want to go, we don't want to go. How dare, how could you dare let this happen on the board? You're sitting there, you're our neighbor, et cetera." And then all of a sudden, one day, one of the ladies called me and one of the moms and said, "We want to be the new PTO officers at Boger. Don't vote against it." I'm like, "What happened?" And so they are now fully embraced into Boger and for anyone who wants to look, Boger PTO has a Facebook page. It is very exuberant and knowing the president of the PTO, it's kind of fun for me to watch that now, thinking that she had the opinion, "I don't want to move. How dare you." Just not that long before she completely switched her mind and wanted to be the PTO president of the new school. So as Chairman Schu mentioned, sometimes it's harder on the kid, on their parents than it is on the kids. So I don't know what this board will decide. I'm kind of still, I want to hear the rest of the board's comments. I'm not sure where I'm sitting, but I will say that we are on timing to hopefully obtain the funding for the money, for the land from the commissioners in November. We have a capital request review later on the agenda tonight. That will be formally sent to the commission upon our approval for the land and the architect and engineering fees to start the design and the site planning and whatnot for the school. And I will tell you, I don't even know where the two parcels are that are under consideration and that's one of the things I want to know too, because we have specific board members for reasons, the whole board can't see things as they're going along. We have subcommittees who do that. But if that happens, the commission will approve the funding on November 19th and hopefully then we can, we as our board can move forward that same night with other decisions that we're looking to make. So we are planning for this and we say a new school in five years. I think Board Member Keiger, Vice Chair there, said at our last meeting, for, it looks like a lot of you watched the video, that the, and Blake, I just lost my train of thought.
That we're in year three of...
You were, yeah, the five-year thing, yeah. We're not really five years out. We're really less than five years and we have built elementary schools in 18 months or less. That, of course, is contingent on funding. So the first thing is to get the land, get the plans going and then hopefully in the next fiscal year, maybe the commissioners will be able to start that funding for us. So, except, I'm anxious to hear what the rest of my board members say, but I, Mr. Chairman, I do want to get a briefing on the possible locations of land because that will play out against this area. And for those of you who don't know, the board has heard this too many times, I do live off of 73. Like I said, I'm in the Boger District now, northwest, northwest, middle and high schools. So I do know these roads pretty well because these were all Northwest territory until Cox Mill came along. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fertinbaugh, as she has been known to be called Ms. Northwest. But anyway, moving along with Mr. Keiger, your comments and questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've thought a lot today about knowing this was on our plate and what I was going to hear at the public hearing and hoping that I would be able to take that in and string together enough coherent thoughts that would make sense. And it's difficult. This is the first time that I've been involved with redistricting. I think when I got elected, I was hoping nobody would ever move into our county again and that way I wouldn't have to take this on. But of course, that's not an option because of two things. We live in a great county and we have a great school system and our staff and administration does a very good job, as evidenced by the awards that are given out and the support that Cox Mill and Odell have here. I think that speaks volumes. I'm no different than some of my other board members. I've lived through it. My child, just two years ago, got sent to a new school. So I understand the impact. I understand the emotional roller coaster of when you're not sure what's going on, you heard the school board might do something, then you get a letter and then a call from the PTO and an email chain. I've been through that and I've lived it and it's not fun and I understand that. Two of the things that I have tried to instill in my children and two things that are important to me is, one thought, everybody wants what is the least painful at that particular moment. So it would be very easy for us to try to figure out what causes everybody the least amount of pain today, but I think that would be a dereliction of duty for what's going to come tomorrow and the next day and down the road from that. I hear you loud and clear, the people that spoke that talked about, this seemed temporary and in a way it is because the temporary nature is because we know a new school is coming right down the path behind it. And so what we're trying to do is grab both things at the same time. And that point, obviously, and Ms. Fertinbaugh just alluded to, the five-year piece is that we're in year three and I just want to make sure everybody understands how that works. We don't get to decide how much money we're going to spend and how many schools we're going to build. That's the job of the county commission. So, you know, this is a two-pronged approach because of where we get our funding and how legally we are structured and what we have to do and the parameters that we have to operate under. We have, since I became Vice Chair and we do have chair-vice chair meeting, we've talked about a new school since the very first meeting that we had and that was, well, I took this seat in December, so that would have been in January. So I don't say that to blame the commissioners. They've got a bigger view of the county to look at than I even have to look at, but it's, there's two sides to the table and it's everything that we have to do together to get where we want to go so that you all are not impacted so severely when kids are moved. I mentioned two things that I'm trying to teach and the other one is that you have to make the best decision you can with the information you have at that particular moment. There's not a person in here that's not going to look back in a year and say, "Well, we should have done that" or "We could have done that" or "Boy, if the land had been over here and we built the school faster and it would have worked out better." We've, you know, October 8th, 2012, we got to decide how we're going to proceed. And I did want to make sure that everybody understands that, I read every email that I got, even Mr. Grundmann, you sent one today while I was frantically trying to get something out to a customer that had a five-page attachment to it and I stopped what I was doing to read it to make sure because, that I knew what you were trying to say. Because as Dr. Sane has looked at all of this, she's got information that she's pulling, the parents are, for lack of a better term, where the rubber meets the road, where things impact. So, you know, we may be up at 50,000 feet and you guys are down in the trenches. I wanted to make sure that we hadn't missed something or saw something that didn't make sense that we were trying to do that just absolutely didn't make sense. And quite honestly, I tried to nitpick Dr. Sane's plan. Certainly there are things here or there that you might, "Wow, could we tweak or could we do this?" But by and large, and not having done this before, the information that we got to base a decision on, I think is sound. I don't know if we'll make some changes to it. I'm not proposing to make a change to it. I think it's difficult, no matter what we do. I was touched by one email that talked about, "Why do we have to go to a new school when the people that are new get to go to our school?" And that really hits a nerve.
Yes.
No question. And, but the flip side of that is, the capping, again, you're just postponing the pain somewhere down the road. You're pushing it off on somebody else and I just don't think that's the right thing to do. So in any event, Mr. Chairman, that's a pretty verbose comment on where we are. And Dr. Sane, I think you went and did your homework. I think we've gotten the information that we need. I don't want to send somebody to a school that they don't really want to go to, but I do trust that the school that will be there, will be there with open arms and a good school for the kids to go to. I have lived through that as well. My kids had passed through elementary school. My neighborhood went up in arms because they were going to move and to a person. And I was not on the board then, but I was, I had run and lost and was going to run again. So everybody called me and everybody talked to me. I said some things that rubbed people the wrong way because by golly, it wasn't that I was 100% "You better stand up and argue for us to stay at our school" because I thought there was a bigger picture involved. And to a person, my neighbors, the people that I live next to, have told me they're glad they moved, that it worked out fine, the principal's great, everything's worked out great, they had the same Title I question, very similar to what's going on here. And to a person, they've come back and said that it worked out fine. So I know that's really, to everybody sitting here, that's irrelevant to them, but that's the context that I have to look at this from 50,000 feet to try to make the best decision that I can make. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Carpenter, you've been awful quiet tonight. I know you've got a lot to say. I'm looking up here for you.
Oh, you're absolutely right. Okay, first of all, I want to apologize for not being there our last meeting. I was under the weather, but I did play catch-up. I watched our meeting and I know that there was one question that was asked by this board and I did get an answer to it. And that first question was, when the road at Poplar Tent and the intersection of 85 and Poplar Tent, when was that going to be completed? I did talk to Louis Mitchell, his office, which he is over that DOT area, and I was told that that widening was going to be completed, December, it's proposed to be completed, December the 29th, 2013. So that is the question with that information. Also, you will be getting in your packet the, all the information from the NPO meeting that we just had. So that is it. Also, I would like to thank everyone that sent emails. You may not have got a response, but they were all read. I want to say at this time that, as David Hight had mentioned, I am one, I don't like to jump before I have all information and I won't do that. My children, both of my children, which have long since graduated, but they attended Odell. No, I'm not a lifetime resident of Cabarrus County, but I've been here 35 years, so I feel like I can say that I'm pretty much that way. And I know how it is when, you know, children have been in a school and I want to thank our staff for all the hard work that they've done. And as staff always knows, Carol Carpenter's going to try to come up with a different solution or try to come up with something that's going to be the best, of course, for the children, but something that's going to look at something that can kind of look at every possible angle. And as a lot of you may know, I was the one that said, "Hey, let's look at the old Odell because we've got two buildings out there that are still good. They were just used recently for the PLC, which we moved." So we're not looking at something that's dilapidated, that's not usable. I want to keep our children together in the area where they're at to try to keep close. We don't, I don't want to see them move from one school to another. As I've heard, a Band-Aid, a temporary situation. My thing was to try to keep, say, a fourth grade, a fifth grade class, I don't know what our numbers are, say, for Cox Mill, what the total fourth graders, fifth graders are. This is something I would like to see. I mentioned this to you. I know that we got a number saying, "Ooh, this is a transportation nightmare. We would have to take these buses and do this." My suggestion, which I mentioned to you, was basically to say, "Okay, go do your regular routes, take all these fourth and fifth, do the regular routes and take them all to Cox Mill. I mean, go your regular routes, your fourth and fifth graders. Then take everybody, like, pick them up like you normally would, then take the fourth and fifth graders or them and then, you know, take them to Odell, but keep them all together. Don't take them to other schools." And my proposal is to leave Odell where it is and just do this, but that way you're keeping them in their community, you're keeping them together. And you mentioned, well, you'd take, it'd take 15 minutes to do this, you know, and you said, "Well, we can't do the difference." What I'm saying, if that means to add another half hour, I think these parents would say, "Instead of moving my kids to another school, I'll give you another half hour on my school day." I may be wrong, but I'm saying, put another half hour on my whole day. You know, now, guys, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm looking at something else, but I'm saying, let's get as much information as we need to make sure we are doing the very best thing. This may be out of, completely out of line. You may say, "Carpenter, you're just way out of, we're still going to need another bus." You've told me that the cost of bus transportation's, what, $29,000? You know, I'm saying, just put them on that little bus after they've all got there, not doing a route everywhere. You may say, "Well, you're still going to need three more buses. That's still going to cost you $90,000. You're still going to have to have $550,000 for revent, you know, redoing that. We still may be looking at $700,000, $800,000 instead of 1.7 million." I'm just looking at, let's look at this to make sure if that's not the case. But instead of moving, I will, I cannot agree with moving children more than one time in less than a three-year period. I can tell you right now, if it comes to a vote in this board, and I'm only one vote, but I cannot, these 37 students that are up in this far end, I can't agree with them moving those. That's just my personal opinion. I can't see that. They're too far away. Boger's too far away. Again, I'm only one vote and I can say, "No." Everybody knows, Carpenter knows how to say no. She's done it before. It's nothing unusual, but that's just the way I feel. I think a lot of good points have been made. Again, I want to thank our audience, the people that came and spoke. I appreciate that. And he's saying, "Carpenter, you're through." But I did have to say that, again, I apologize for missing my meeting, but I did watch it and I do appreciate all the hard work that they did. But if we can check those numbers, check and say, "Carpenter, you're full of it. I'm used to it." But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And I know for a fact she did review all the stuff, you know. Of course, I did too. I'm sure the board members, over and over and over, lost sleep, all of that stuff, you know. But Dr. Sane, I would like for you to address some of the concerns that Ms. Carpenter has addressed, if you will.
I'd be glad to.
Just so that we won't get, you know, in a stalemate here, we can keep moving with the meeting.
Absolutely.
Can I make my remarks first and then she can answer mine as well?
Well, that'll be just fine. Thank you, Ms. Mott. You go right ahead and, Dr. Sane, you just hold on while we get Ms. Mott's, okay?
I'm agreeing with everybody, partly. The thing that concerns me is that I don't feel I have the data, the numbers, the facts to make a decision on this. And in that, I'm saying, the idea of using the Odell building, I don't know how many students that would accommodate. I don't know whether there could be mobiles used at that site as well, so I don't know how long that school would be available as a stopgap measure. I don't know the cost of doing whatever needs to be done to it to get it usable. I also don't have, maybe you provided them last time, but I couldn't put my hands on them, the numbers of the students that are moving over and what the ultimate capacities are for Cox Mill and Harris Road. I know that when I was on the board before, 110% was considered overcapacity. Is that still the figure that's being used when, to determine whether a school is overcapacity?
My understanding is that's the figure agreed on between the county and the Cabarrus County schools.
Okay, and so I don't know exactly what those numbers are. So I need a lot of data to go along with the question, with the thing. It seems to me that since we're already looking at land or at least trying to initiate the search for land, and I hear that we are going to soon need a middle school as well, we need to be looking at a piece of land that might accommodate both of those at the same time and put it in that upper area, knowing which areas are more likely to be growing. I agree with Ms. Carpenter that it just does not make sense to me to take these youngsters from way up in that Upper Western corner and move them when, in just a few years, there may be a school that they can go into that's closer to where they are now. So I don't have the data and that's the issue with me. If I had the facts, now, I'll be happy to get those lined up and send them to you so you'll know just exactly what questions I'm asking. In other words, the bus use, what would be the cost of additional bus use to Odell or to Boger and so forth? Because I don't understand how, I mean, these children are going to be on a bus anyway.
Right.
They're going now to a school. If you're taking that section and going to another, I mean, I understand bus routes are extremely confusing and... I mean, I understand bus routes are extremely confusing and, and complex. So I guess it's the greater, it's the uncertainty of the plan, and, and the lack, in my opinion, the lack of the long-term vision
Right.
for that area, because I haven't seen a five-year plan that, that says, this is where this one has to be, and this is where the middle school, and this is when we have to have it.
Right.
So I, I would not be prepared tonight to, to vote on anything, but if I could get that information, I'd be better.
Let me answer a couple of questions for both you and Ms. Carpenter that I can answer immediately right here. Why would we need more buses if we have students who are already riding buses? That's, that's a pretty easy question to answer. Our bus routes can be no longer than 45 minutes. So if I'm picking up children and I've already at my limit of 45 minutes, it'll take another bus to go out there and pick up the rest of that route. We don't fill, we can't fill buses to capacity except in highly populated neighborhoods. And so we can't say, I've got 54, excuse me, 64 students I can put, elementary students I can put on this bus, divide the total number of students in the county by 64, and that will tell you how many elementary buses you need. If it takes me 45 minutes to pick up 30 children, that's all I can pick up in our three-tier system. And, and that's where the complication comes in, especially for those that are on the middle route. If I'm on first tier, I can start a little earlier. If I'm on last tier, I can run my bus route a little earlier. But middle tier, I have no wiggle room as far as buses. So that's why you have kids on the same buses, but it may take extra buses. And I gave you, I think, a quote of about four per school to do that. How many students would we have at Cox Mill, Ms. Carpenter? I have, right now, 218 students, and this data is as of the middle of September, so it could be a little bit more. 218 fourth grade students that would be rising fifth grade students. I'm also concerned about getting in the right number of instructional hours per day. And if we keep the same hours and I move children, get them over there, get them settled, turn around, I probably would have to feed them breakfast over there, because Odell does not have a cafeteria. But even if I didn't, I'd have to cart, get food over to old Odell. I can handle approximately 400 kids over there. That's my total. The fourth, the third grade, right behind at, just at, excuse me, at Cox Mill, is 211. So if I took rising, I couldn't take both the rising fourth and fifth grade from both schools. I could only take one, okay? Cox Mill and Odell, how many buses do you have? Where's Lynn? Okay, 18 buses. If I backed up, if I backed up that school's time, then I would need to find 18 other buses to go pick up first-tier buses. And that becomes problematic as far as, that's 18 additional buses rather than just the eight that we were talking about. If I missed a question, please ask me again.
But if you, what is the capacity right now at Odell?
Give me one second, yeah.
I mean, right now, what, I mean?
Right this minute?
Yeah. The, the new Odell, I mean, we're not talking old Odell. It's zero at old Odell.
Yeah, new Odell.
It's zero right now.
Carolyn, no, but you said we had, we had the high school there, and so we had kids there, so there is a capacity for that school.
Yeah, there, I'm looking at the chart Dr. Sane has provided, 946 for new Odell capacity. And we are, at September 24th, we're sitting at 1046. We're already at 110%.
At, at Odell right now?
Right. This is in your board docs?
That, that was what, I mean, yeah, that's the, I don't have, I left that one out.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's there. Just so you know, it's there.
But that one is, with the, with what you've got there, you said 1046 at Odell. But you're at 12-something right now at Cox Mill.
I can handle more mobile units at Cox Mill. At Odell, we can only handle the number of units, which I believe is four that we have right now. That's it. That's all the land permits. At Cox Mill, I can handle the extra 12 mobile units, which increases our ability. But the, the core capacity of the school to handle lunch, media, gym, I think you have to go back to that, and that's what this program capacity is about, okay?
Because both of those were designed at 1,000, I know.
Right.
Dr. Sane, let me ask about a question. A question you just said, you said we could handle more mobiles at Cox Mill.
Not additional to what we have today. We just-
We have mobiles at Cox Mill that aren't currently being used. Is that what you mean?
I, I, what I mean is, I can put more mobiles, I can, Cox Mill can handle a larger number of mobiles than the property at Odell, is what I'm trying to say. No, I can't add anything, any, any mobiles to either Cox Mill or Odell at all.
How about mobiles at the old Odell? Could you put, do that?
I believe I can handle some, but there's no cafeteria out there. I have to bring in food. There's no media center out there. There's no gym out there that's usable. And they can, children can go outside to play for gym for a good bit of the year, but there's a good bit of the year that they cannot.
Now, they did carry in food when they were at PLC though, right?
Right. But the PLC, if you remember, was like 102, 85 to 102 kids while it was there. We're not talking, we weren't talking about bringing in food for 300 to 400 children.
Well, one of the things, and there again, when we're looking at cost, what it would bring, take to bring the caf, I mean, they did have a cafeteria.
It did.
And I don't know what it would take. Do you have any idea what it would take to bring the cafeteria back? Anybody have any idea?
Ms. Carpenter, those, that information there is, is in our board docs program right here, and it's somewhere allocated 500,000 to renovate.
Yeah, I didn't, it did not include a cafeteria or media center or gymnasium. That only included bringing the HVAC up and bringing the, if we, if we need to do anything with electrical code, and Lynn, you add to this if you would like.
Yeah, Mr. Whitaker-
And that, that was a minimum guesstimate.
And that's, that's why I was wondering if, if the cafeteria was even.
No.
No, ma'am. The cafeteria, as a matter of fact, has had a lot of the equipment stripped out of it and used in other locations. So I, at this point, I would hesitate to even give you a number as to what it would take to actually make that operational. The, the number that we gave was strictly to bring services back to those two buildings, electrical water and gas, and to provide new heating and air conditioning equipment for those two buildings. Nothing to do with the food service facility. So that, that would be on top of, you know, whatever those costs would be, would be on top of the half million dollars.
How many students do you have at, and I know this is, you're thinking, where in the world is she going with this one? How many students do you have at Long? 200 and something?
246 or so students, somewhere in that range.
I know they did, for a year or two, they did, where they bought their lunches in. I mean, they didn't have a cafeteria, so I know it's feasible to-
It, I, I'm not saying it's not feasible. I'm just saying that children would have to eat in their room. And we would use the cafeteria catering service, the food service catering service to bring that in. It's doable.
Well, I'm just looking at, see what the option is of bringing the cafeteria back up and the other. I mean, I'm just looking at any option. I mean, I'd like to find the, find out what it is.
Absolutely. The other thing I would say, though, if you're going to have children to eat in the classroom, you're going to need extra custodial services to handle cleaning up after that.
Okay. And you said it was 218 of the fourth, and now you said that was just Cox Mill, right?
Yes.
And then you said that, that was the rising fourth graders.
Let me, let me go back again.
Okay, 218.
Cox Mill Elementary, rising fourth grade, 218.
Okay.
Rising third grade, 211.
211. Okay. And that's only Cox Mill, so that's a total of 429.
That's right. And if you, Odell, Odell, rising fourth graders, 188 students. Excuse me, they're rising fifth graders. They're fourth grade going into fifth grade. And third graders going into fourth grade would be 150 students.
Okay. All right. That was all. I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Ms. Carpenter, you all finished up? Ms. Minnet, do you have some more questions?
I, I don't have a question. I have a comment. You were talking about needing to buy more buses for some of these situations that we're considering. We are looking at land for new schools in that part of the county.
Would have to buy buses for that anyway.
And we're going to have to buy buses for those schools.
Yes.
So you're merely buying buses earlier than you anticipate.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. Mr. Kiger, you had an additional comment you wanted to make?
I did. There was one point brought up that I wanted to ask. You may not have this information, but that, what was the numeric impact of only taking the kids below Rocky River? I, I think the growth along the county line there is probably certainly a valid point. I just don't know if you've got your data broken out that detailed or not.
Robert, I don't, I don't believe we broke, I don't, I did not break out that one particular subdivision. So, you know, I don't have an answer for that today.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Okay, Ms. Furtenbaum, you have a second round.
Well, can we ask Mr. Clutz? He usually has a pretty good idea. When we're looking at the projected fur, and you're looking at Alta Crest, Twin Creeks, what's the other one, Misty something?
Misty Woods.
Misty Woods. Do you remember about how many kids were in that north of the river section?
Twin Creeks, Misty Woods.
Yeah, above the airport.
Mr. Clutz, would you just come to the podium, if you don't mind, please? Thank you. Speaking of Mr. Clutz, while he's coming, he's been around forever. And he's helped do so many redistricting plans, and he could just about tell you how many hairs is on each dog in Cabarrus County. So anyway, Robert.
I know that there's less than 20.
On, on the east side, or in the, in the total north of Rocky River there?
North of Rocky River.
North of Rocky River, both sides.
Talking about Twin Creeks and Misty Woods.
So most of the children are coming from south, then, the apartment complex and so on?
Yes.
And what's built up around them all?
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, Ms. Furtenbaum, did you get your answer? You, are you good?
Yeah, I guess while we're asking this, I, I have a question too. And up north in the Shiloh Church, we kind of have that jag where we'd say Odell would continue as is with the, the jag up to Shiloh Church, or up, up around Shiloh Church, you know what I mean? And then it's coming down on the left-hand side and coming south, of course, down to Castle Brook and Odell School Road and whatnot. I wasn't sure why we had that kind of point in there.
Oh, the point on the right, directly across from Kingsview?
I don't see Kingsview on, on that here.
I don't like Kingsview on our, but I don't-
Okay.
No. But ju- just underneath Sudbury. So, for example, that one section in the middle comes up to State Odell, up to Sudbury, and then on the east and west ends of Sudbury, it's saying to go to Burger. Wasn't sure why that hook was there, except for the roadways and the bus, bus routes, maybe. I don't know.
That's what it, it has to do with the, the roads that we were excluding in that area.
I guess, and I don't know how many children, if, if we took Sudbury across to the west side, I don't know what that subdivision is on the left, what it's called, with Hidden Forest and Davidson and whatnot. Do you know what I'm talking about, Robert? Kind of the U on the far western edge of the county that drops down to the farm.
Okay. In that area, between Odell School Road and the county line, would include Davison Road and Connecting Streets, which is the subdivisions you're talking about. We have a total of 37 students.
From Sudbury over to the county line, from Odell School Road to the county line?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, right.
37.
That's north of the farms. That doesn't include the farms.
Right. I was just talking about the part from north of the farms to Sudbury.
Yes.
Just that part.
We didn't break that out separate from the subdivisions. There's two subdivisions, or there's a subdivision above that. We didn't break that out separately, where Sudbury Road is the dividing point.
Okay, board members, do we have any other questions or comments or concerns that you want to address, Dr. Sane? And if you don't, then I'm going to say a couple of things about, since I haven't had a chance to speak directly toward this. So are there any other, any other comments, Mr. Fur, Ms. Furtenbaum?
Just Mr. Chair, what I shared before. I really want to discuss and close session or get a briefing on where the parcels are. I mean, I think that will affect my decision.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Kiger, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Minnet, you have any other further comments or questions? Okay, well, at the absolute very least, there's two good things that will come out of this. You know, we're talking about four schools, and all four of these schools are relatively new schools. So it's not like you're going, say, from Cox Mill to the old Odell. Which, speaking of the old Odell, in my opinion, and I'm just one person, I'm just one vote, as far as using the old Odell as a viable school, anytime in the near future, I don't see that happening. Because of the, to take the cost that it would take to upfit the school and make it usable. And so as far as I'm concerned, I, I couldn't support using that school again as an elementary or middle school at any time soon, simply because of the money that it would take to upfit it, the water lines. And I'm sure Ms. Marsh was principal there before she moved to the new Odell, and I think she would vouch for exactly what I just said. Am I somewhere near right, Ms. Marsh, on that? I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that, but you was there for so long, and you know. Would you want to step to the podium, just for a minute, maybe? That's, you're not scheduled, but I, I would, I'd like for you to, because I want to make sure that we've addressed every issue. And I'm going to talk about some of the issues that I mentioned and other board members mentioned too. Turn your mic on, Ms. Marsh, if you will.
I'm not sure, excuse me.
You ready?
Had a mint in my mouth. I'm not sure about the part that was re, redone, okay? I have been in there once. I'm not sure about the second grade wing that's there. I do know the cafeteria, the cafeteria's been stripped of its equipment, and the gym is in horrible shape. There's, there's some damage that, that was, is beyond repair without totally wiping down the building. So that's, it was in, getting in bad shape when we left four years ago. It's our fifth year at the new school, and it was in bad shape at that point. So, you know, I have not been in there. I, I went in two years after we moved into the new school. I was trying to find some old furniture. And, you know, I couldn't. It was beyond even getting in the building. It was that bad, so.
Well, that's sort of what I figured. Thank you so much, Ms. Marsh, for coming up to the podium unexpectedly like that. That's one thing about being a principal, you never know when you're going to get called on. So I appreciate you coming up. But the comments that I had, you know, at least the schools are new that you're going to, if it goes that way. And then another good thing is, is that the rising fifth graders, you know, that's settled. You know, they will be grandfather clause right in. They'll continue right on at the school and progress right on to the middle school that they're supposed to. And I think that is correct statement. Is that right, Ms. Sane?
That's my recommendation.
Yeah, that's what the recommendation is. And, but based on the comments that I have heard from the board members and, you know, Ms. Carpenter talked about Odell, that option is out. And I, I know one of our speakers talked about the options that we- about the options that we'd mentioned at our work session, why haven't those options been looked into thoroughly? One of the options that I thought about was maybe adding some additions to some of the elementary schools, and Ms. Furtenbaum said that in that my two-year absence during '09 and '10, whenever I was not on the board, that it was looked into for additions for those schools, and some schools would possibly allow for additions, and most schools wouldn't though because of the land requirement and then the way the school was built, because they were built for a thousand kids to start with. And so, that option was pretty well ruled out right up front, because the schools are built for, the ones that were built for eight hundred, we've added on to, and I think Fur was one of those, we added to back up to a thousand students now. And, you know, the experience that we're having at Cox Mill and soon be Odell, when you've got twelve hundred kids in a school that's built for a thousand, you know, it's, it just doesn't work that good. They've made it work because they really, we haven't had much choice, we've made it work, just like whatever the board decides this evening, or whenever we decide to do this, we will make it work, and it'll, it'll be fine, you know, it'll be fine, the dust settles, it'll all be fine. But what I would like to ask, you know, is what's the board's pleasure at this time? I can tell you before we go on further, what I think we should do, and I'd like to hear from Dr. Sane and maybe Dr. Shepherd as well, in one way or the other, in my recommendation, what I would like to do, in light of hearing you that have spoke to us tonight, and the comments and the questions from the board and concerns that the board might have, that I would like to recess this particular item on our agenda for one week, and hold it, hold another board meeting next Monday night at six o'clock specifically to decide on this issue. Now, Mark, you're our attorney, are we able to do that?
You, I mean, legally, you can schedule a special meeting of the board, as long as you provide forty-eight hours' notice, so I think that would be something you could legally do if, if that's something the board wants to do.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All right, how many board members can be here next Monday night?
I would just, why can't we just table it till our November meet, they said we didn't have to do anything till December, all the board members will still be here in November of this original board, I don't see why we can't just table it to our November meeting. That way, we would still have plenty of time to get any additional information that some of the board members have requested, and we could still make that decision at that time, this original board could. I would like to make a motion that we table this until our meeting in November.
Well, my only comments to that is, and I spoke about this during our work session last week, and that is through my experience only, and I, like, this is my twelfth, well, ten year, and when I finish up, it'll be twelve years for me, but anyway, all the redistricting that I've been through, all you're doing is you're just, you're just lingering the agony, you're just lingering the pain, you know, we need to decide on it as soon as possible, and truthfully, I had come to the meeting tonight expecting to make a decision tonight, that was where I was at, and I think some of the board members might have been there as well, but I'm only one member, just because I'm the chair, I'm still just one member. And so, you know, whatever the board wants to do will be up to the board, but I don't want to see us drag it out, because all we're gonna do is just make it harder for everybody involved, and more, more, more and more and more for everybody else.
Well, the reason I'm saying this, we know that later on in the agenda, we do have the proposal that is going to be going to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the land, I know that I serve on the Land Committee, that we have that, which Ms. Furtenbaum has asked to talk about in executive session, this is going to the Commissioners in November, I think that we would have a lot more information that would be done, that would be coming forth to this board, and that is why I just feel that would be more appropriate, and again, this would be before this board gets off, you know, before a new board would be taken over, and that's why I just feel like it would be more appropriate, these, and this is not gonna be effective until the following year anyway, no matter what would be done. If I don't get a second, there's nothing that could be done, so.
Well, that's...
If I don't get a second, all it can do is die, Mr. Chairman, so I would like to make a motion that we table this to our business meeting in November.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. We have a motion, and so, there's no need to lollygagging around with this. Do I have a second to Ms. Carpenter's motion to table this until the November meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
November work session.
Well, I had said business session, but I would get somebody to know that.
If I know the board, they're gonna wanna talk about this some more, so that's...
All right, so I...
That's the lingering part that I'm talking about, I mean, you, we can drag it on, we can drag it on to January.
Okay, November, November work session, okay.
Can we have discussion on that motion?
Well, that's what I'm fixing to ask, I'm fixing, if we don't have a second.
If we don't have a second, you can't discuss it.
I'll second that.
I say, okay, I got a motion, I got a second now.
All right, so I have a motion that we postpone this to the work session in November, and I have a second. All right, now, I'd like to give the board opportunity, those that, obviously, Ms. Furtenbaum, I mean, Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Fur, you're okay with it, so I don't need to ask you anything else.
No, but I'm gonna say something.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason, not the reason, the reason is, you know, like I said, this is my fourth year, and we've been through quite a bit of redistricting, and we've never made a decision this quick. So, I don't know why we're doing it now. But, you know, I'm not saying I'm not gonna go along with it, but I want to know a little more, I wanna know possibly where the land may be, but we've never, we've never acted this quick, especially when it comes to kids.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Fur, I think that you might have forgot about our last public hearing and our last redistricting plan, that everybody got all riled up, and it was, this was heaven tonight, you are to, I mean, really, and so, and that's the, that's the fear that I have, lingering it, because it just sometimes tends to make things worse, and that's just from my own experience of all the years I've done it. But anyway, we got the motion, and we got the second, this is a board decision, it's not mine. All right, so those that have, Ms. Furtenbaum has a comment, and then we'll move on to Ms. Kiger and Ms. Minnet.
Mr. Chairman, I concur that I would prefer that we discuss this at the November fifth, I believe it is, work session, and vote on it that night, even though we normally do not vote at work sessions. The reason being is, we are delayed in November with our meeting due to our annual conference, so we would not meet until the nineteenth, and I don't want to delay it those extra two weeks. The other thing is, if we could somehow arrange our agenda that night to have executive session first for any further updates on land, so that hopefully Mrs. Blackwater, who could not be here due to death in the family, you know, that she could be here, and we can have that full discussion and answer any final questions about that land selection before we would actually do the vote, so.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum, Mr. Kiger?
Yeah, I think that that's, that's fine, and I agree that no need to waste the two weeks while we're off at a conference, if we can, as long as that's okay to vote on at a work session, but I think that's, if we need to wait and get some more information, that's fine. I try to digest as much of this as possible, and out of respect for Dr. Sane and how hard she's worked on it to try to digest it and come prepared to make a decision, but there are valid questions that have come up, and we'll take a little further look, and then we'll go from there. So, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger, and Ms. Minnet, where are you at on this?
I'm with the rest of the board, in that I think we should discuss it at our work session, and also, I think it's a good idea to have executive session first, so that if there is land identified, that we can know about it, because I think just the fact, I know we wouldn't be able to reveal what that land was, but if we felt fairly confident that that would ultimately work for some of these same families that are having, if we decide to move these children, that then they would be moving and then moving together again in a couple of years, if there's no other way to do it, but I'm not secure in a decision today.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. That's why we have a board instead of individuals, it's not a I, it's a we, and so, we make decisions together, and based on what we've heard, you know, rather than delaying it for a week or two weeks, we'll delay it until the work session in November, and at that time, we'll schedule our executive session up front to clarify everything, and then we'll bring it back out into open session and vote on it, and everybody go home, and we'll just have to live with the decisions that we make, okay? All right, thank you so much, board members, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do think you should, you should still vote on the actual motion.
See, they don't let me forget nothing. All right, we got the motion, and we got the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries six oh, Ms. Monroe, and so, the meeting will be held on November the fifth, work session, and it'll be the first thing that we do when we come out of closed session, okay? All right, now, we're gonna move on, board members, to the next item, and those of you that are here for the public hearing, if you feel free to leave now, by all means, do that. Matter of fact, why don't we take about a five-minute break, board members, I need to step to the restroom, and I'm sure some of the rest of them probably need to take a break too, okay? Thank you, five minutes. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're back now, and the next item on our agenda is nine point two, which is the approval of the school improvement plans. Mr. Matthew Fells not gonna be here with us tonight, Ms. Kirk sent out an email either today or over the weekend, letting us know that he wasn't gonna be able to be with us, and if you had questions or concerns, to address those to him, and as of the time of the meeting today, there was no questions or any comments made towards the school improvement plans. So, with that being said, I hope that you've had a chance to review the school improvement plans and look over all the effort and time that was put into these school improvement plans, because it is very time-consuming, a lot of people's involved in doing that. But I want to give you another opportunity to ask questions, and if you have questions, let Mr. Kirk know, and we can either move on with the vote, or we can try to get you some answers, or however you want to move. But with that being said, we'll start with Ms. Minnet on your end, if you have questions or concerns about school improvement. None for Ms. Minnet, Ms. Carpenter, any questions?
No questions, but again, I know y'all got to express how you liked them, again, I did look through them, and I want to thank all the schools, the staff, for all their time and energy that they put into those, and I did, I have gone through them, and I did appreciate it, and I did see all the time and energy that was put in, and I want to thank the staff and thank all the schools for all the time that they put into it, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger, you have comments, questions, Ms. Furtenbaum?
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, I look forward to seeing, actually, I will see them as a citizen, not as a board member, but for next year, that the plans have more integrated statistical data and whatnot, instead of separate charts, but other than that, I'm ready to approve tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. Mr. Fur, you have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Okay, board members, do I have a motion that we accept the school improvement plans as they're presented to us?
So moved.
Have motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries six oh on the school improvement plans, Ms. Monroe, thank you. All right, our next item is nine point three, I'd like to ask Ms. Donna Smith to the podium, and she's there waiting on me, we're gonna talk about the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Cabarrus County Schools and Cabarrus County regarding the gym supervisors. Okay, Donna?
I'd like to introduce this by saying, last week, we looked at a longer agreement, a joint use agreement, and since that time, a couple of things have happened. One is, the commission, our commissioners will actually be looking at this document next month in their agenda, as opposed to this month, and we did have the opportunity to sit around the table together, Cabarrus County School staff, as well as members of the county government staff, looking at our joint use agreement and having lots of conversations. And through the conversations, we realized there's a lot of work we can do together to make this joint use agreement something that will benefit both the school system as well as the county. But due to the timeliness of it, we needed to take one section out of the agreement you looked at last week, which is actually that of the gym supervisor, and create a memorandum of understanding that had the support of everyone around the table with this. And the timeliness of this is so important, this section was in the previous agreement, it's just that our sports season will be starting in November, and because that season runs from November to March, it does not give us enough time to hammer out, if I could use the word hammer out, the rest of the details, and I say hammer out, there was not a lot of dissension across the table, it's just there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen. So, it was our agreement that we'd like to come back to the board tonight, pulling out the gym supervisor section, what you had before you here in the document, I'd like to point out, there's been one change proposed by the county, instead of, in the first whereas, it says Municipal Park and Recreation Department, they would like that stricken, where it just says for the Volunteer Youth Athletics League, and then names the different areas. But what you will see here is a much more detailed agreement as far as the role of the gym supervisor, and Sarah Motley Stone sat with us during that meeting and helped craft from that meeting the response that we'd like to propose tonight. So, I'm presenting this to you as really our proposal, which is simply the memorandum, excuse me, memorandum of understanding regarding gym supervisors, just that section, and we'd like to have the board take action on that tonight.
Thank you, Donna. Keeping in mind, board members, this is just a portion of the joint use facilities, and this will be a part of the joint use facilities, once we have got that document worked through, because this is a work in progress, and hopefully, it won't be, you know, too long before you'll be bringing that back to us, and we can make a decision on all of that, but this portion here will at least be a part of it if the board decides to vote on this, I mean, approve this tonight. So, with that being said, we'll start on Mr. Fur's side, you have any comments about the memorandum of use? Okay, memorandum of understanding, and also, Ms. Furtenbaum?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, in the second paragraph, Donna, it says, whereas the county coordinates the scheduling for the, it says Volunteer Youth Athletic Leagues, I don't know, that sentence sounds awkward, is the, is the Youth Athletic League volunteer, or is it volunteer-led, or community youth athletic leagues? I mean, I'm not sure what it should be, but the youth leagues are not volunteer, like, it's not a volunteer league, it just seems like that word was awkward now with the change.
That actually dovetails into my one comment, so I don't want to jump on, onto your time, but, okay. Well, the only, I think we've just swerved into why this has taken so long. I was fine with this until we got the red line version back from the county, so now here we are again, but, no, I think there are two ways that the, these towns do this. Some are run by volunteers, and some, like Harrisburg, have a municipal parks and rec department, so when they say Volunteer Youth Athletic League, I think they're speaking of a youth association that is responsible for coordinating and running that particular town's athletic teams, soccer, basketball, some football, and whatnot. So, that, you know, the way that, that reads, I guess it read fine to me, other than youth athletics, I don't know, it seems like maybe it should be Volunteer Youth Athletic Leagues.
Should it say volunteer-led?
It could say volunteer-led.
Youth Athletic Leagues.
But my, my question, I guess, from the county, was why did we, if, if, if we know Concord and Harrisburg, and I'm not sure who else, are led by municipal parks and rec departments, instead of striking it, shouldn't they have just added it, so you had both, and then you're covered?
And I may need to defer to Mr. Enriquez here, because that conversation was actually between the attorneys.
And I don't, and Sarah talked to Rich Cook, the county attorney, but he's indicated to her that a number of the leagues are not municipal leagues, meaning, I think that, so I think he was worried...
That's true, but that doesn't mean they, they all aren't.
Right.
At least two.
I think that's it, I think it's it.
Donna, is that something that you can work out, or do we want to just leave it like it is, or?
I mean, an indoor may be, I think, I think his concern, again, I'm just reviewing the email correspondence between Rich and Sarah, so, but I think the, I think the concern was, since they're not all municipal, he was concerned about saying that they are municipal park and volunteer, and it may be that an indoor would resolve it.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, but whether it says volunteer-led, I mean, they are led by volunteers, so if there's a word, something that just need to tweak, not to jump ahead, I'm fine with the, with what we've set up, that just, I was curious about that one, you know, the one change, the red line that they made.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Furtenbaum, was you through with your comments, Sarah, do you have still some more concerns?
I guess I still want something to be specific, because to Blake's point now, we have had other athletic leagues, if you will, for different sports, asked to use our facilities, and this is a specific agreement with the county, so I think, I guess, just change that word, the county coordinates the scheduling for the spec- word, the county coordinates the scheduling for the specific municipal or volunteer-led youth athletic leagues of Bethel Concord. To say that those are very specific entities, not entities that may reside or play in those areas, but those are specific names. So it's not anybody in the Wyncroft area that runs any kind of sports program, it's the very specific entities that are referred to as those. So, so just to restate, to change the sentence to, whereas the county coordinates the scheduling for the specific, for the specifically named municipal or volunteer-led youth athletic leagues of Bethel Concord, Harrisburg, et cetera.
Well, I'm supposing that the county's going to have to, it's just going to go back to the county if we do this, because this is their approved version, we're not really approved, but their recommended version, is that right?
It was the county staff, the commissioners will actually review this next month.
And their attorney, Mr. Cook, you know, this is their recommendation, based on what the attorneys talked about back and forth.
We can certainly go back to them as wording.
Well, we just got to remember that, once again, there's a time element on this.
Yeah, well, I guess, my concern about the specifically referenced is, then there must be an exhibit or something that's going to name the leagues, hm? The actual, the leagues are listed?
Yes, they're listed.
Bethel Concord, Harrisburg, Cartso. Bethel Concord, Harrisburg, Cartso, Adele Mount Pleasant, and Wyncroft as the county leagues.
Okay. Back, I'm sorry, we can go back to Mr. Cook with that, with that proposed language change, I'm fine with that.
So the scheduling, whereas it says for, coordinates the scheduling for the, the word "specific," volun, restate what you was recommending again, Cindy.
The scheduling for the specifically named municipal or volunteer-led youth athletic leagues of Bethel Concord, et cetera. So I'm clarifying.
I'm still confused then. Where is the list of what's?
It's right here.
But I'm assuming, is there like a AYSO league in Bethel that's using the gym, or whatever, whatever volunteer-led organization?
They have, they have specific youth leagues under each of those town names, or area names.
Like the Bethel Athletic Association, you know, they have that, and then Harrisburg Athletic Association, so those are specific, but, but I think they're spelling out, though, here, I think that this spells out, when it says "of Bethel," and it lists them out, so it is being specific to those.
Yeah, I wouldn't, if you're referring to this list, then I would not recommend including the word "specifically named."
I wouldn't think so either, because it says here.
Because that suggests there's some other specificity.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so either, and I'm thinking that, you know.
Could you say county-recognized, and then that would cover all of them that are in existence now, and perhaps might come up more later?
Be like, like you're, is that like what you're, Ms. Minnet, you're like, you're saying, the scheduling for the rec, county-recognized volunteer-youth athletics?
Yeah, I guess if you say county-led, though, then that gives room for organizations to approach the county with us having a say in a change in use of our facilities, so I think we want to, you know, keep it at these, these are very old longstanding leagues.
Yes.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? This is on the action agenda.
I, I guess I'm, would want to ask Mark, if, take back the, the stricken, if that's not a word, I can make it up, language, and add and/or, behind the, the red line.
I think you can do that. I, I would suggest, from a timing perspective, it seems to me it might make sense for you to approve the resolution with those, the memorandum of understanding with those changes, and that gives the commissioners the option to accept it, or if they have a problem with that wording, they could reject it, but as opposed to taking it back to them, and meaning you would not act until that time. So I think you can certainly approve the memorandum of understanding as amended tonight, if you want to take action, that gives the county an option to approve it.
Yeah, we need to take action on it.
Mr. Chair, if I could amend that wording change.
Well, let me, well, let me get Ms. Carpenter, because she hadn't had a chance to speak yet. Ms. Carpenter, you got any concerns, questions?
I'm the same one that everybody else.
Okay, you're, you're good with the?
I like to do the or part, the and/or.
Okay, well, that's fine with me, and so with that being said, and we can go ahead and approve this, Ms. Furtinbaum, would you like to make the motion with the amended motion, and then we'll go for a second and vote on it?
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding regarding gym supervisors with the change to the second paragraph to read, whereas the county coordinates the scheduling for the municipal or volunteer-led youth athletic leagues, et cetera.
Okay, board members, you heard the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Yes.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries six oh. Thank you, board members. Now we'll move on to our next item, and that is the approval of the capital requests, funds request, and that would be Mr. Whitkey, and so if you would come to the podium, and you're there waiting on me, and I'm ready to hear what you got to say.
I sort of feel like the barber who, when approached by the person sitting down in the chair, suggests a little off-the-top Sam, and he gets carried away listening to the ballgame or something, and the person ends up looking like me. It's, we've met on this with our subcommittee of the board and talked about this, and in making the adjustments to the, the list from last week, we may have applied a little bit too much of the cutting edge. Let me take you first to the second item, which is the revised list. Let me bring it up to a size we can all see. Oops. It's still a little bit small, but what I would like to submit is that, when we did update this list, or revise it as such, what our goal was, was to focus on two things. One was the amount of money we believed that the county would have remaining after the commitments that they've already made on some of these funds, and, and that was that we were told originally there was about $5 million available, and that there was a commitment so far of about $1 million. So we looked at a roughly a total of $4 million as being the target for this, for this group. We also took out the things that the board had asked us to remove, so we removed things like the energy projects, we removed all, pretty much all the paving projects, and we also, unfortunately, eliminated all of the major capital projects, and I think that's where we might have gone a little too far, but it, because in retrospect, after talking to some of you before the meeting this evening, I think the anticipation was that the capital projects might remain, even though many of them took them, took the list well over the allotted funding limits. So to that end, I guess what I wanted to just reinforce is that the very first priority item on the list, as it's been revised, is still this new school site, and that has a total, let me see if I can move this over just a little bit here, a total amount of dollars allocated as $2.4 million. And, I'm sorry, you know, I'm looking at this, and this isn't the revised list, this is actually, this is a medium revised list. We still have the energy funds in here, so let me, let me get out of this one and get you to the, do I just?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Which one?
You know, the first one, the master one, we'll.
You got it.
I, yep, now, play with size again. This, this is the revised list, and as you can see, the first item up is the.
Mr. Chair, we cannot see, my monitor's not working here, so I can't see whatever you're looking at.
Oh. Yes, yes, sir, it's, it's the 10/8th version. It's the very first, first attachment. So the first item up there is the new schools, followed by Carley Fur, ATL, and Patriots, and Boger Elementary.
Okay, I thought you were referring to just a newer, a master list, this is the shortened list.
This is the shortened list, yes. And so this, in effect, is a, what we did was really took the, all of the lists that were presented to you before, and reduced this down to what we consider the most required and the most difficult and most important projects, more from a maintenance standpoint than a pure capital project standpoint. All the projects are the same as were previously presented to you, with the exception of the second item, which is a safety issue, and it's the replacement of the exit door locks in the classrooms of the four new elementary, or newer elementary schools. What we found, and it happened actually last week, so it was between meetings, in talking with our expert on, on the scene, they, he was out at the schools, he investigated the condition of the locks that are in place, and without saying a lot about that, I will say simply that although the locks that are there do function, they don't function well for people who might have to use them, in other words, small schoolchildren, they, it takes a great deal of force to open the lock, and our recommendation at this point is to go back to what we normally use, which is a full bar with locks, so that you have a lot more pressure to open the locking device, rather than the small paddle that's currently there. That's, that's an item that we brought out of the, it was on the $180 million list, we've brought it up now that we have the discussion with the, with the expert on, on the site. So that, that's the one added feature to this list. Everything else really is pretty much what you've seen before in terms of projects, and it has a lot of the other projects that were part of these groups removed. The one other thing I would say is where the playgrounds are identified, that's a misnomer, because it really, that really is a safety-driven issue. The playgrounds that were identified, and they, in fact, are, one, for the most part, either nonexistent, as, as is the case with Carley Fur, we do require a new pre-cake playground for the classes that are at that school. But the other three playgrounds identified are school playgrounds that no longer are manufactured, we can't get parts for, and in some cases, I know for a fact that the ones at McAllister and Colchon Webb, those are deteriorating to the point that they have what we call wooden decks, so wherever, wherever there's a flat surface, those are made of wood, and those are deteriorated to the point that they're splintering and becoming hazardous to use, and they, they need to be replaced. Long and the short of it is, though, that that should really read "safety," not just playgrounds, and, but with that list, I would say, that, that, in effect, establishes what we believe are the most critical needs at this point in time. And as I said, all of these projects are on the large capital list that we generated last year for our budget. The other item I would offer, though, is that if the board would like to add additional larger capital projects, if you look at the five-year plan that we have in place, the difficulty with adding any, any projects is that the majority of them are significant in size. But we do have one recommendation we would like to make to the board at this time, and that is that there's a project to expand the RB McAllister, R. Brown McAllister, excuse me, elementary school with an addition to the rear. It would add a, a large multipurpose space, I believe it was four classrooms, either two or four classrooms, I don't have the definition here, it would add faculty offices and, and some storage space. And that would go, if you're familiar with that building, literally, as you walk into the main building and follow a corridor to the back, it would just continue out that, in that direction toward the, toward the playground areas, and there is room on that plateau of land behind the building to accomplish that addition. So that would add a great deal of core space to that school and allow us to address some of the needs that they have, and that project total is roughly $3 million in capital funds. So if the board would like to request, you know, more than the $4 million as established on this particular list, we would recommend that project being added.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitkey. Board members, you've heard from Mr. Whitkey on this, and we've studied it, and we've studied it, and we've studied it, and I've talked with a couple of yous, but let's start with Ms. Minnet, and you can tell us how you feel and where your questions and concerns are, Ms. Minnet, on the capital funds request. Remember, this is part of the money, the one-time money.
Right, I just have one question. We've, we've been talking about the growth in the northwest section, and I'm looking at the middle school capacities now, and we're going to need a middle school fairly soon after we do this elementary school, but I don't see it on any of these lists, the land for a middle school. I just, that's just a question. I'm not going to be here to make that decision, but that's a question, it's not here.
They might advise you that.
And this is, I'll say no. You know, I just, does that not need to be on here somewhere?
I agree. And that $3 million could sure go to that land, instead of going and building, because I'm not turning.
Well, that's a good recommendation, Ms. Minnet. Ms. Carpenter, we'll continue with you.
And that's a perfect, I got real mixed feelings here, and I may get, again, I'm only one vote, just like you mentioned earlier. You mentioned about adding $3 million for a bigger capital expenditure. I have a problem, again, it seems like tonight I've been the thorn in everybody's side, and having different opinions, which is not unusual, but to me, the $3 million, it's Ms. Minnet, we know that we've got that problem, I would rather at this point say, if you want to give me commissioners, you know, if you want to give me another $3 million, thank you very much, I'll take it, and I'll go ahead and buy me some $3 million worth of land for my middle school site, or go ahead and do some, if I've got some land, I'll go ahead and do my engineering for a middle school site. That way, I'm ahead of the game, and I'm not going to have to deal with a roomful of parents that want to know where I'm going to put their children when they're in middle school, and that way, I won't have to deal with this again, and that way, I won't have to deal with that. Or I would say, give me that $3 million, and let me go ahead and do some of the things that are still at some of my other, other, other sites, because I know there's some things that said possibly at the, that have been talked about, possibly with the expansion at, at possibly, when you were talking about the expansion, some of the programs they may want to put at the AL McAllister would be some additional programs that would mean not just that $3 million, but then there would be cost of the programs they would maybe want to put there, which are some expensive programs, which I don't know where we're going to get the money for those additional programs after you do that. So I would rather use that money to do some of my additional things at some of the other schools. I know that Harris Road, we've had a parent that's been there saying, mm, I've got some things I want done there, I know that we still have some of the older schools that we need to do some other things, so I would rather do that.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Keiger, your comments, thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and Mr. Whitkey, I will take the blame for some of the, the communication, because at our, our committee meeting, I think what I had in mind, and some direction that I was giving you, I maybe didn't articulate well enough, that ended up being the reason that some of the projects got hacked off the, the list, and so I apologize to my fellow board members for that, and to you for having to take the arrows for listening to that, but, you know, just to recap, we had a, a good meeting with a lot of good discussion about this list and these projects, and what we were trying to do, or what I was trying to do, is keep in mind what we're trying to accomplish, and that was to get a list in the hands of the commissioners, that they currently have some money that they are offering to us to do capital projects, and the, where, where we got a little bit off track, we agreed, and it wasn't just me driving the bus, but we agreed that the, the light fixture removal and some of the energy projects would be great to do, but maybe on a later date. So we did agree to pull those projects off, and where we got a little bit off was at the top of the list where we had capital projects listed, we just didn't have dollar amounts, and you guys had listed bond, and I, in my, in my mind, I was thinking, we need to take that off, because we're not trying to show that we're pushing for a bond referendum, that's a different conversation, and I think what happened is, we took that as, we'll pull those projects off, and not necessarily just showing the funding source. So in, in my opinion, let's, let's put those projects, but take the list, the revised list that you've given us that shows October 8th, put those, the, the previous list from September 21st of the, what you showed as a priority zero, knowing full well that land is at the top, because we have talked about that ad nauseam, and show that list to the commissioners as our capital, as our capital projects, and that, we, you, you guys had done exactly what we talked about, going through the list and prioritizing, I guess you need to filter those in and prioritize them, along with what way. I guess you need to filter those in and prioritize them along with what way with the other, with the other projects. So I think the, the phrase that I used when we got done with our meeting the other day was, is this clear as mud? And we all nodded our head and said, yes, it is. So unfortunately, I was speaking the truth, because it was clear as mud.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Furtinbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lynn, I have one question about, well, several questions, but one in particular. On, on the list for the October 8th, today's meeting, it has Jam Robinson High School camera system upgrades. That was not on the copy that we saw last week. Was that just missed? That is $205,000. I just checked that list again, and it is not on there. So it may have just been missed?
It, it was missed by us, in other words, as far as level of importance and all. We actually, it should have been on the list initially. It is, it is a lot of, I won't get into detail again, but it needs to be replaced. What the system there is, is having lots of problems at the moment, so.
Okay. Like I said, because that, that was the difference. I, I literally did a full comparison of the two sheets, and it wasn't syncing up to me.
As I say, it's, it's on the, the large capital requirement.
Next question is, you have given us a memo regarding a budget clarification for energy updates.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you suggesting that that $336,000 be put in this capital request list?
No, actually, I'm, I'm just indicating that, that was something that I anticipated initially being able to cover through energy savings dollars. What we're finding out is that although we, we do save energy, we're not capturing actual dollars. We're, that, that's what we are referring to as, let me, let me just.
So it's unrelated to this capital list? I wasn't sure why it was on the same agenda either.
It was, just to point out that, that, that one, those budget items, I think there were four listed on that, on that sheet that I attached.
Okay.
Along with the other energy projects, our projects, we will ultimately ask for separate funding from the county at some, some point in the future. I'm just saying, we don't wanna, I don't wanna use current maintenance dollars, budgeted dollars, to address those right now. If we're gonna go after all the lighting that we talked about for the gyms and whatnot, I'd like to use those four projects as part of that package at the same time.
Okay, okay, I'll ask my question again then. Do we want to include all or part of that $336,000 in the memo in this capital funds request? Is that a smart place to do it? I took that as being related, maybe I misread it.
Well, I don't see that listed on here on the October 8th.
I know, but I'm just saying.
It's not listed, and so what I see here is $4,035,000. That's not a part of it, and so, and based on what Mr. Wickie said, you're gonna apply for that money with the commissioners at some point in the future, but not as far as this one-time money that we're talking about. So it really has nothing to do with this at all. Is that correct?
That's correct, except to bring to point that we're not gonna be doing that out of maintenance dollars this current year.
Right.
We're, we're gonna approach the, and hopefully with Kelly's agreement, we're, we're going to approach the county with a, with a request specifically for, for energy, energy savings dollars to be able to, to fund all of those projects.
And I can see clearly where you're coming from, and you know, cost avoidance and cost savings are different issues.
Yes.
And so what you're talking about, the $336 is not necessarily savings, that's cost avoidance.
Yes.
But you don't realize the cash money to go along with that.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I think it was just placed on this agenda, item and error, and it gets confusing the situation.
Well, it did put a little bit of confusion, but we'll, but we'll get through that though, that's no problem.
Well, I, I would like to strongly concur with Ms. Minnet's suggestion that we bypass the R. Brown addition, because that does not provide seats in the needed area of the district. And instead, I'm looking at the numbers provided by Dr. Sane for capacity, and in the northwest west area of the county, we have Harold Winkler Middle School, that is already at 85.9%. Harris Road at 97.12%, and Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, that is at 103%. I think it is extremely prudent at this point in time to add a second purchase of land for a middle school.
Okay, Ms. Furtinbaum, thank you very much. Mr. Fur, you have any comments?
Yeah, well, I've just, I just agree with them that, that $3 million should be the purchase land. But I was also just wondering, how old is Royal Oaks? Isn't it one of our older schools? And I wouldn't know why we would really wanna add, put $3 million into a school that may be replaced. I mean, R. Brown McAllister, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very old school, there's no doubt. But, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, up until the last couple of weeks, when we were talking about the redistricting plan, and not only one elementary school, but possibly two elementary schools, and even the middle school possibility, and land is always, it's always has been a setback for us, you know that. And this was an issue that, that I hadn't even thought of really, until just recently, and when we talked today, matter of fact, it never came out. So Ms. Minnet, you have had a good recommendation there. And Lynn, again, though, it's not my decision, it's the board's, and, but I don't know, just keep it in mind that it will cost more, because middle schools require more land than elementary schools. And so I think that the amount is probably somewhere there about, but I believe that Ms. Minnet also made a comment during the public hearing, or shortly on that, about doing a piece of property that would combine a middle and an elementary at the same time. It would maybe save money, because you're looking at $5.5 million between the two sites, if the board appropriated that $3 million, and if the commissioners would go along with it. But I could see where they would possibly go along with that a little bit better, maybe than they would with other things that we've listed. And so with that being said, are there any other, further discussion on this? And then if there is, let's hear it. If there's not, let's have a motion, and then we'll see how it goes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the capital funds request with the addition of a second land purchase for a future middle school to relieve Harris Road, Northwest Cabarrus Middle, and Winkler.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaum. Okay, you, board members, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Well, do we need to clarify on what, what line item and what priority?
Yeah, well, we'll do that before we vote. We'll just ask, I'll, I'll ask for one more round. Okay, so just make sure we got a second. Do I have a second to that motion? All right, Ms. Minnet seconds it. All right, at this time, I'd like to see if there's any further discussion. And one of the questions I did have, and Mr. Kiger mentioned it, that is, where would we put that in the lineup here? Okay, so with that being said, Mr. Wickie, you've got suggestions on where we should put that? Dr. Shepherd, maybe I'd like to hear from you, if you can say something about this, what your thoughts are.
I think it might be wise for you to not take action on this at this time, and to wait till after we've been in closed session and can have a chance to show you properties that we're considering, and then you can make a more informed decision about purchasing land.
Now, I, I think that's a good idea. I think there's, there's some discussions that we should have about that. There certainly are economies about placement, but I think there's also timing issues that you need to hear about. And I, I think we need to make the board aware of some issues that we know of because of the investigations we've done to date, so.
Okay, well, this is for, this is an illegal situation now, Ms., well, unless Ms. Furtinbaum, do you wanna withdraw your motion at this time? Would that be the proper process, Mr. Furmankeyes?
If there's not a second, ad nauseam?
Well, we did have a second.
There's not a second, right. And then, and then amend the.
Well, we did have a second, Ms. Minnet's second.
I have to kind of adjust to do it.
Yes, I think so. I'm trying to think of the right procedure. You got a motion and a second. Right, so you're asking to essentially, you, you wanna move consideration until after closed session, either amend the agenda or defer consideration to follow in the closed session.
Mr. Chairman.
I think that a motion to defer consideration actually takes priority over substantive motion, and so under Roberts rules, you can make that, anyone could make that motion to defer consideration of the pending motion is a procedurally superior motion, so that would be in order at this time if someone wanted to make that.
I think that's what we should do then.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we defer consideration of the motion on the table following our closed session this evening.
Okay. Board members, are we clear? I have, do I have a second on that?
I'd second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on that one, so that will be deferred until after closed session, and then we'll go back into open session, and then we'll vote on it or move forward, because that motion is still on the floor. Okay, so we'll move along now to our next item on the agenda, and that is the approval of the board member attendance for the North Carolina School Board Conference, November the 14th through the 16th. I guess what we need to do is, we need to find out, you know, who all's gonna be going to this. You've had your opportunities to think about it and all that, so we need to have an approval from our board telling them who we're gonna send. So can I, can anybody tell me who, who's gonna be going to the annual conference? Carolyn's going, all right, who else? Is anybody else going? Blake, are you going for all three days, Carolyn?
I was just gonna go for Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
But, and then looking at the cost of it, you really is, you might as well pay for the full thing, because really the cost is the same thing.
For, for Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah, for Monday and Tuesday. I mean, even though Monday, Tuesday, yeah, I may go ahead and, I mean, if I'm paying for the thing, thing, I may save some Wednesday, but definitely be there Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, all right. Blake, you're gonna go, you're gonna go Monday and Tuesday, you say? Okay, so Blake will be going Monday and Tuesday. How about you, Cindy?
Uh, it's Carolyn's, register for all three days, please.
Okay, and Cindy?
It's cheaper anyways, yeah, it's cheaper to do it that way. Do two days.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can register me for all three.
Tim?
Do, do we need perfect attendance to, in order for, for us to get some kind of award next, next year?
Well, we're.
Since I'm coming off, I don't know why I would need to go unless it's gonna benefit the whole group.
Right, okay, well, I plan on going.
So I'm not gonna benefit the whole group.
Well, we're gonna be coming up to the delegates in just a few minutes, and so if we've got, I, I don't know whether Holly's gonna go or not, I haven't, she's got some situations, so I don't know. But right now, we've got Carolyn and Blake, and myself, and Cindy, so that's four of us. And we'll be going, and the next item here is, we're gonna need four voting delegates.
Delegates, yeah.
And then we'll need an alternate. And that could be, that could be Holly, but we'll have to see.
Well, if she don't go, I'll go for that day.
Yeah.
If not, y'all have a good time.
Yeah, and also, just for the record, I plan on going on Tuesday only, just for the voting. And so we've got that set, I think, and so we'll need to have a motion that Carolyn, Blake, Cindy, and Lynn attend the North Carolina School Board Annual Conference from November the 14th through the 16th. And so with that being said, do I have a motion that we accept this?
Submit.
All right, have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote, any opposed? All right, so we got our four attending members. Now we'll move on to the last op, item on our list tonight, and that is the voting delegates. And because we are in the category of more than $25 million in current expenditures, we are allowed to have four delegates. And so I'm assuming since the four we have will all be voting delegates, and, and if I stand to be corrected, let me know, but that's the way that I see it. And based on that, do I have a motion that we accept the four delegates being Carolyn, Blake, Lynn, and Cindy to represent Cabarrus County Schools as our voting delegation? Do I have a motion?
Submit in a second.
Carolyn, motion. Cindy, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go.
And we're gonna make, you wanna make Holly the alternate?
Well, with her not being here, I'd like, I'd not like to, we, I mean, I don't know, um, we can put Tim for that, and then if Tim can't go, maybe Holly can, you know? And also, just for whatever it's worth, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know whether this is the right time to mention this or not, but, you know, the, the election's coming up, and we've got eight candidates, and some of those have been attending the meetings. And for those of you that are here, in times past, the candidates that have run for the school board, if they wanted to attend the annual conference, we have allowed that to happen in those dates. And, but you need to, if you have interest in that, you need to let Ms. Monroe know. I know that when Blake was a candidate, you went.
Well, it was, it was after I had won the seat.
It was won, yeah, that's right, after you, so, but, you know, we won't be meeting again until after the election. So that's why I wanted to throw that out, just for whatever it's worth. So if you have interest after the election, if you're one of the ones that is so lucky to get this seat, these seats, then, you know, you'll have the choice, you know, to go to the school board annual conference. All right, okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to go to the next point here, and that's our guest speakers. We have one guest speaker with us tonight, Mr. Price Crutchfield. And if you would come to the podium, Mr. Crutchfield, you have three minutes to address the board, and we ask that you respect the time limit, and you got the clock there, that 'll tell you when you got 20 seconds to go, and the red light means it's time to stop. Thank you for coming, and you'll see it to your left. It should be a green light, and it's on go for you now.
I see some long faces here. Why all the long faces? I'm not charged for my services? I don't even want any accolades. Look, the fact is that I've been arrested 17 times, and your tax money had to help steward these arrests. And my position is, if we're charged with a crime in this country, there needs to be a damaged party. And I've never faced a damaged party in court, not once. You can't damage the police, they're paid public servants. Which brings me to another question. Why is it that the police in Concord can molest kids at our schools and not be held accountable? Why is it that at Jay Robinson School, there was a Concord police officer arrested and charged with a felony sex crime? And then three years later, the matter's not even adjudicated in Concord, it's tried in Raleigh, away from the citizens of Concord, where he's allowed to make a plea bargain so he doesn't have to register as a sex offender? I had a meeting with the chief of police, and the city manager, and a member of the school board, and at the meeting, the chief of police described in detail what he did. Yep, allowed to make a plea bargain. I'm having a hard time with that one. And the police in Concord? How come they can consume alcoholic beverages on school property and not be held criminally liable, when there's a zero tolerance policy against drugs and alcohol? Which brings me to another question. Why is it that at the sheriff's department, over here at Little Bucks, I had a conversation with the sheriff about this, I voted for him, but anyway, over here at Little Bucks, there was a sheriff's deputy that was seen on camera stealing chewing tobacco. I saw the nice deputy over here at night, and it brought, I thought about it. And maybe he could explain to y'all why it is that the sheriff's department, when you're seen on camera stealing chewing tobacco, you're not charged with a crime. Now, I know a little single parent, she's got two kids, she's like me, she's trailer trash, she got caught over here at Kmart stealing a little old item, and you know what? She got charged criminally real fast. I mean, I'm having a rough time with these things. Now, I said publicly at the county meeting on TV that Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department lied under oath in court to Judge Hamby on me. He broke the law and lied under oath when he said, "Your honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." I don't harass people's family in restaurants, I paint murals in restaurants. The owner of the Wayside Restaurant will give me a good report card on that. I don't harass people's families in restaurants. Concord Police have been lying under oath in court to Judge Hamby and breaking the law. Scott Newell broke the law, lied under oath to Judge Hamby, when he said, "Your honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." I don't understand that. He charged me with cussing on the sidewalk, I used one expletive one time after he demeaned me. This is the way it works in Concord. This is not a healthy atmosphere for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield, for abiding by the time limit. Okay, board members, it's time for us to convene in closed session, and this is pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual, public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged to discuss pending judicial action. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed session? Motion, I have, do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks, with that being said, that concludes our business meeting for October the 8th, and we'll see you back here on November the 6th, I believe it is. Good night to everyone. Okay, board members, as you know, we have concluded our executive session, referenced the capital funds request, and so now we're back in open session, and we're ready to take a vote. take a vote on the capital funds request, and I'd like to ask Ms. Furtinbaugh, if she would, to restate her motion, so that we know what we're voting on, and also, Ms. Minnet has already seconded this motion, I just want to restate it for clarity. Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the capital funds request before us with the October 8th date be approved with a modification to add to the second line, a new school site for an elementary school at the projected expense of $3 million to include associated fees for analyzing the site.
You said elementary, middle school?
Oh, I'm sorry, for middle school, yes, I'm sorry. The second line would read, "A new school site for a middle school." Mr. Chair, I'd also like to just have a note added at the bottom on the two, reconstruct tennis courts, that those are for athletics, physical education classes, and for community usage. They're not just for extracurricular athletics, for those two items.
Okay, board members, you have the motion, and we already have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we'll make our presentation at some point to the commissioners for this. Mr. Wickie, you will, I suppose, let them know that the board has given them their list that they've been looking to get for some time.
Yes, sir, it'll be on the November board.
Their November board session, for the commissioners' work session, and they'll vote on it on the 19th, and that should give us clarity as to get moving on one of these sites that we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Wickie.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes that vote, so we're ready to reconvene back into closed session, and I'm not gonna read all of the guard code that I have to read normally, so with that being said, can I have a motion that we reconvene back in closed session? Have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in closed session, and when the media gets through, we...